Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Monday, May 13th, 2024, meeting of the Pierce County Council in Monday's study session. The time is 11:03 a.m. All members are present except for Vice Chair Campbell, who is excused. That brings us to item number two, review of the May 14th, 2024 regular council meeting agenda. Ms. Long, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. This is tomorrow afternoon's regular council meeting agenda. We'll begin with your consent agenda. You have only one item on that, and this is for introduction and scheduling. It's oh, 2024, 523. This is amending section 448, oh, two oh of the code related to special revenue funds. And this is for referral to Health and Human Services. And you'll be setting the final on this for June 11th. Moving down to section seven, proclamations, you have one item here, and that is proclaiming May 2024 as Hunger Awareness Month in Pierce County. And that was requested by council members Campbell and Hitchen. Under section eight, resolutions, you have two items here. First step is our 2024, 158 S. This is approving certain council-initiated amendment requests and other land use and policy considerations as part of a preferred alternative for the comprehensive plan periodic update. This was forwarded as substituted without recommendation at CDC on April 29th. And I will note that there are eight amendments to be discussed shortly. They're all in your packets. Number two is our 2024, 159. This is setting the date of an evening District Number Three council meeting for Tuesday, July 30th at 6:30 at the Pierce County Skills Center. Under section nine, ordinances, there is one item. It's oh, 2024, 518. This is vacating a portion of Snellstrom-Bush County Road. This has received a due pass at EIDC on April 23rd, and I believe the recommendation on this is to continue it for a one, one week to comply with the posting requirements. We can confirm with Mr. Swanson that one week is sufficient, but I believe that was the conclusion we reached.
Mr. Swanson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, it's the, the posting requirements were forward. The other thing we looked at was the 10-day notice requirement for the check. The check has been received. It is within the 10-day period, so that isn't one we have to worry about adjusting dates for just the onsite posting requirement. And another seven days will be more than adequate to meet that, that requirement.
Thank you.
All right. And so those are your agenda items for tomorrow's regular council meeting.
Are there questions about, before we get into amendments, are there questions about the remaining items on the regular meeting agenda for tomorrow? I don't see any. Let's get into the amendments on the preferred alternative. This is, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Kruger, I'm actually going to ask you to take a step back. There's a lot of good community conversation about what the preferred alternative is and is not. I know you're going to brief this tomorrow, but there's folks following along the way.
Sure.
I'm hearing a lot of confusion in the community about what a preferred alternative does and does not do. So I'm just going to ask you, for the public's benefit, to briefly set the stage about what is the purpose of a preferred alternative? Are we making final decisions by setting a preferred alternative? And just set up what is in front of council tomorrow.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Mike Kruger, council staff, and I, I've seen emails as well that have kind of led me to believe that folks think that the council's making a final decision on the comprehensive plan tomorrow, and that's not the case. So what the council is doing is it's completing the work that scopes the final environmental impact statement that needs to be prepared as part of the comprehensive plan update. So anytime the council takes, or the county, I should say, takes an action, the county needs to do environmental review. And on a non-project action such as this, right, there's no, there's no permit required to build something as part of your action. It's a non-project action. You are doing an environmental impact statement, looking at the potential environmental impacts of those decisions. So what is happening tomorrow is you're bookending that process. And within those bookends, the council will then have options to establish policy based upon subsequent legislation that will come next fall. So that's what's happening.
We're gathering data so that council can have the range of impacts, the range of data to make informed decisions in the fall.
That, that's, that's right. And, 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 and there's a little bit more to that. You are limiting kind of the scope of what your options are in the fall related to environmental impacts. So what you would not be able to do, or at least you would create a challenge for the county, is if you chose to do something that had greater environmental impacts than what was studied as part of that final environmental impact statement. So as I've talked about, these bookends that are establishing kind of criteria by which policies will be evaluated for environmental impacts. If you, if the council in the fall says, you know what, we want to do something that will create more environmental impacts than what was analyzed, you could be setting yourself up for an environmental appeal and potentially a, an appeal to the growth management hearings board.
Very, very good.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll continue to try to untangle the confusion being created in community. But let's go through the amendments that are in the packet, please.
Certainly. So there are eight amendments that have been prepared for, for the council's consideration tomorrow afternoon. And I would note that I just received information from Councilwoman Krueger. She will be talking a little bit about some additional amendments that she would, she's planning to sponsor as well that have not been prepared. And so potentially more to come. But in terms of where we are right now, there are eight amendments that are in your pocket. The first one is an amendment that concerns the transmittal of the regulations and the, and the comprehensive plan update that will come in the fall. And so it's providing specific dates for council to receive these proposals in order for the council to fully understand what is being proposed. And so the dates are September 1st for the comprehensive plan itself, and then October 1st for many of the other plans and regulations that will create the consistency, the internal consistency with the county's comprehensive plan. Those, those would be requested to come in October. So that's the first amendment.
I have a question about amendment one. Councilwoman Krueger.
Thank you, Chair. I just was going to mention that I was, I had some amendments. That's, so that's already been mentioned.
Thank you. Amendment two, Mr. Kruger.
So amendment number two concerns short-term rental housing. And so this amendment modifies an amendment that was worked on at the committee level. It would eliminate a proposed 30-day maximum rental term for an accessory dwelling unit that's used as a short-term rental. It would also limit the number of guests that are permitted in the short-term rental based upon not only the capacity of the septic system, but also the potable water system that serves the accessory dwelling unit.
Are there questions about amendment two? The purpose of this briefing is to make sure we understand the content. Councilwoman Krueger.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Is it my understanding that an ADU has its own septic, separate from the house?
Typically, but, but not always.
Okay.
Not always.
Councilwoman Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. I was just looking for clarification on the need of calling out potable water and, and set, like, I understood the septic, but the potable water is, just looking for clarification as to why we would need to call that out.
Is that a question for me?
Anybody who might know the answer. So the maker of the amendment or you who helped prepare.
Councilwoman Rill.
Thank you. Well, as with septic systems, water availability is just as important, so I thought I'd put it in there.
Okay.
Anything to add, Mr. Kruger?
I would note that that's an obligation for a permit today, just like adequate septic systems are required today. The issue we get into, of course, is code enforcement when a short-term rental exceeds the capacity for the infrastructure that was built to support the building. You know, you, you have a two- or three-bedroom ADU that's used for a short-term rental, and all of a sudden it's being used for a dozen folks. And so then you're exceeding the capacity of that system. So it's an, it's an enforcement issue. Amendment number three, Mr. Chair. So amendment number three would, would obligate the department to look at eliminating the rural bonus densities on the peninsulas only. So there is a preferred alternative that was worked on in committee that would, that would have the department take a look at potentially eliminating the rural bonus densities countywide. This amendment would constrain that to the, to the peninsulas only.
Questions on this amendment three. Councilwoman Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to make sure I truly understand. So based on your introduction to this, I would consider countywide versus specific area to be a change in the environmental impact. So if this were to pass, and then we decided that we wanted to add one other section, we would technically not really be able to do that because we hadn't studied it through the environmental process, or it would be more challenging.
Right. So, you know, so, so the issue of rural bonus densities has, there's, there's different aspects to that issue related to things like congestion, things like county's obligation to plan for growth, so, so targets. Kind of by way of background, the county's comprehensive plan is considered to be lawful, okay? And everything that the council does and adopts, when, when adopts land use regulations is considered to be valid and, and really not challengeable unless you open up the issue. And that's the case between periodic updates. Whenever you do a periodic update, organizations that don't believe the county's adopted policies are adequate can challenge the county. And so that's what's happening now, is that it's a periodic update, and everything is being opened up. The county, Pierce County has a thing that allows for bonus densities in the rural area. It allows, in, in, in many of the rural designations, you can double your density. That's something that has not been challenged in Pierce County. Pierce County has an adopted target for rural population and, and housing that was adopted, it was adopted last year. And, and so there's potentially a challenge, there could potentially be a challenge coming from some outside party related to whether or not the county's capacity exceeds the 20-year projection for growth. If the county does nothing regarding rural bonus densities, that decision, that decision will signal that, that you think we're, we're consistent with GMA, and, and the, and the hearings board will consider that policy choice valid unless an outside group that challenges the county can prove that we made a mistake. One of the things that they could come after is these, this capacity issue. And bonus densities obviously create more capacity. So right now, we are, we are good to go in terms of our adopted targets. We have established a target to say, you know, over the next 20 years, we're going to accommodate another 3,000 housing units within the rural area. So that's 20 years for 3,000 units, right? And so as was presented to council when you adopted that standard, we have vested projects in the pipeline to create additional capacity. We are seeing, and we can track, building permits that come into the county that add to the capacity. If you, to get to your question, Councilwoman Hitchen, if you eliminate any rural bonus densities in the county, you are arguably reducing capacity, potential capacity. And so that could be seen as a good thing from a compliance with GMA perspective. If you, if you don't eliminate all capacity through bonus densities, one could argue that you haven't gone far enough. So that could be a challenge that someone could take us, they could take the county on. It's possible that an outside group could challenge the county and say that your rural 10 densities are too great because of this capacity that's in Pierce County for, for construction, just based upon existing vested lots. We have many, many lots in the rural parts of the county that are smaller than 10 acres, and they're all eligible for a building permit. And so that could be something that a group comes along and says, hey, listen, Pierce County, just based upon its existing platting, platted pattern, has way too much capacity. And so you shouldn't allow any more subdivision in your rural lands at all, like, not even at one unit per 10 acres or one unit per 10 acres. You should just lock that all down. And so I'm just giving you all this as part of, you know, kind of background based upon your question. What's the vulnerability? If we only were to limit rural bonus densities to areas kind of on the mainland side of the Narrows Bridge versus the west side of the Narrows Bridge, there's a vulnerability there, okay? And so, but having said that, our comp plan is presumed to be valid. So unless there's a challenge, we're probably safe.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the level of detail there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Kruger, in your response to Councilwoman Hitchen's question, you made mention of housing targets, and you reminded council that over the past eight months or so, we've adopted housing targets for sub-geographies in order to prepare ourselves for this comprehensive plan review. We said, here's the housing target in the rural area. Here's the housing targeted in urban, unincorporated Pierce County. Here's the housing target for metro cities like Tacoma. Here's, here's the housing target for core cities like Lakewood and Puyallup. Right? So we, we adopted these things called housing targets. Do we need rural density bonuses to achieve our housing target in the rural area?
No, no. We have, I mean, I guess that's one of the things I was getting at in terms of my description to Councilwoman Hitchen, is that we have, we have plenty of capacity in the rural area today to meet our 20-year target, just based upon existing vacant lots.
Thank you. Councilwoman Krueger.
Thank, thank you, Chair, and appreciate this conversation because it's always difficult to discern on how these targets are dispersed and calculated. So there's a number that comes in, and the PSRC figures out, okay, you have this much for this zoning, that zoning, and whatnot. How is it determined what rural area these houses are built? So is it by district, or is it by luck, by who submits first?
It's, it's within, or, it's within the UGA versus outside the UGA as related to, to your question on rural targets. And the county's obligation is to accommodate 3% of our growth outside of the UGA. So it's a 3% kind of spread across the entire rural area, not based upon community plan geographies. It's just this larger rural geography, 3%, 3% of the growth that's been assigned to the county.
So were you, were you speaking in current terms of the 20, for 20 years, 3,000 units?
Yeah.
That's it?
Yeah. That's what, that's what council's adopted.
In the rural area.
In the rural area.
The rural area, which is where people kind of want to go live. That, so that divided by 20, that's not a lot.
No, it's like 150 per year type of thing. I mean, that's not an exact number, but it's, yeah, it's like 150 building permits a year in the rural area to, to meet our target.
And that is inclusive of all of the plats that are already, that could be built out? I mean, how do we, how do you manage that? If there's a, a chunk of land out in the rural area that has been platted, and, and maybe it's 60 units or 15 units, and the owner decides they want to build, and so they can go submit, and, and?
Oh, yeah.
That, I mean, how, how do you reconcile such a small number and people who own property?
We, 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 we adopted as part of our target legislation, fine as the fact, indicating that we were going to be meeting our target, and we were gonna, and we were gonna accommodate that number of units over the 20-year planning horizon, and that we were going to focus growth in the urban area and kind of bend the trend, right? And, and, and we were going to promote housing in these different geographies, as the chair mentioned, focused on targets based upon income band, if you recall, right?
Right, right, right. And I get that. I'm just kind of looking at-
Yeah, so just urban versus rural.
At, at the role of, of, you know, discerning who wins and who loses here on this, you know, inside, outside the UGA. So anyway, that, that kind of helps me understand. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councilwoman Rill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kruger, as you, as you know, growth targets are growth targets. Have, in, in your history of, we, how are we doing at, at even meeting growth targets in, in Pierce County?
I mean, generally speaking, we've been exceeding our growth targets in both urban and rural designations. So we've been, we've been generally exceeding the targets. That's been, that's been one of the challenges. And, you know, the platting pattern is what it is, right? And so the council can do things to try to promote growth in the areas that the state has indicated, you know, growth should occur here, like on, on these corridors and, and in these centers. And so that's what council has done, is you've done things. You've adopted policy and regulations attempting to promote growth in the locations where the state has said you need to prioritize your, your spending. And this plan that's coming before council does more of that by trying to line up the infrastructure investments in those growth areas. Now, you know, the conversation we're having now regarding this amendment number three is kind of, is what it is. We have this very, you know, Pierce County has a large rural area in Pierce County, and there's, you know, I don't know, 70 years maybe of, of, of subdivision patterns that have occurred through all these years, and there are vacant lots throughout the rural area. And Pierce County allows anyone that owns a piece of property to construct a home on that property, as well as an accessory dwelling unit on, on that property. This preferred alternative doesn't change that at all. So, and, and we, and I don't think we can even, you know, go there because there's issues concerning, you know, unconstitutional takings of private property by prohibit, you know, there's no consideration of prohibiting people to build a home on a vacant lot in the rural area. The, the question has to do with adding more lots. So that's kind of the question, I think, before the body from a policy perspective. And again, this preferred alternative is not making a decision in that regard. It's just taking a look at where do we stand, and what should we do, and what are our options to prepare the council in the fall of making a final decision for the next 10 years related how you want to, related to how you want to address that question.
And then, following up on that, historically, just because you have the ability to do bonus density, not everyone's going to do that.
No.
No.
And, you know, you really got to want to do it to do it, because you still got to provide the septic systems, the water availability and all that. If you're in a sensitive area, it's going to limit you to whatever you can do. So, but, you know, giving property owners a continued option in, in, in this case, within my area, is what this amendment speaks to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kruger, I, I want to make sure that council really understands what's in front of us. Does the current alternative, does the current preferred alternative as drafted in committee allow council to make à la carte decisions as it relates to rural density bonuses? Maybe put it, put a slightly different way. As drafted in committee, the preferred alternative, could council say, we want to keep rural density bonuses in, in mid-county plan area, but remove them in the Key Peninsula and maybe remove them in the Graham Community Plan Area, à la carte, like by community plan, by community plan, as drafted with, with the, the bookends? Could we make à la carte decisions or all or, or nothing? Or say, no, we want to keep all rural density bonuses, or, or get rid of them all, or, or make community plan by community plan decisions in the fall after we have all the information?
Yes, yes. Because, because you're bookending the scope of the environmental work, and by eliminating any bonus densities, you're arguably reducing environmental impacts. And, and so that's the reason for my answer. The converse doesn't work, however, just to be clear.
The converse does, does, so if we, if we adopted this amendment and council was convinced we needed to-
Increase densities.
Increase densities.
That's a problem.
We, you, you couldn't do that.
Well, I wouldn't say you couldn't, but I would say-
It's be challengeable.
It's, it's more difficult, right? Because you wouldn't have the basis in your environmental analysis to justify that policy decision.
Or if you wanted to then remove rural density bonuses in agricultural resource land, or remove rural density bonuses in mid-county or something, if this amendment prevails, we would be tying the hands in the, in the decisions. We would make it very difficult for council to make different decisions and not have the full breadth of decision-making authority in the fall.
I'm, I'm not sure I exactly followed that, the question as you were phrasing it, but quite simply, if you are decreasing rural densities, you are decreasing environmental impacts. And, and that's, that's okay to do based upon the environmental analysis that's being completed through this preferred alternative work. Does that answer the question?
It does.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
Any other questions about amendment three? Let's go to amendment four.
Amendment four concerns the employment centers and corridors. And at committee, the committee expanded the kind of geography that we were looking at when it related to employment centers from, from Frederickson to all of your employment centers and corridors, and established an alternative that said, we're concerned about jobs, and we're concerned about uses that take up a large amount of property and don't provide a lot of jobs within these specific zones. So that was the, that was the preferred alternative. Said, look, let's look at that. Let's look at that and make sure we're at, we're providing adequate jobs in these areas. What this amendment would do is it would say, we're going to just take mini-storage uses off the table and not allow those uses within our employment centers and corridors. So mini-storage, where people are storing their belongings, would not, and, and they're, they're typically take up large acreages when you're doing those uses, you would not be able to do those uses in those employment centers and corridors. And I would just say, for your benefit, the areas where you could continue to do that would be non-high-capacity transit commercial areas would be the only places left in the county where you would do mini-storage. This alternative also would be modified to clarify that there would be no limitation when it comes to, you know, warehousing or logistics types of businesses that support the Port of Tacoma. Those would be allowed within the employment centers and corridors. So that's what amendment number four does.
Questions about amendment number four? So if amendment number four prevailed, and it restricted the preferred alternative environmental impact statement to no longer consider limitations on warehousing to maximize jobs per acre or, and whatever the department would come up with during their analysis, it would make it very hard for council to consider something that really maximized high-paying jobs per acre, per se, or some, some other kind of incentive or regulation that got at what council might be wanting to achieve with warehousing and employment centers.
It would, it would limit your options, for sure. The other thing it would do is it would make it difficult if council came back and said in the fall, we want to accommodate mini-storage in employment centers, because you've said from an environmental perspective, we're not going to do that. So, so, so the environmental work that would be, that is, that is being done now, to say, we're just going to take that use off the table in these areas, to reinsert it without doing the environmental, would be a difficult thing to defend if there was a challenge.
Thank you. Amendment number five.
Five, so amendment number five concerns this discussion that council's had now four months related to the amount of additional lands to be conserved in the county through different programs for, for carbon sequestration purposes. And so the alternatives that, that were initially evaluated by the department had a 50,000-acre threshold versus a 150,000-acre threshold. At committee, you settled on a 100,000-acre threshold. What this amendment would do is it would clarify that the objective is to- threshold. What this amendment would do is it would clarify that the objective is to expand programs, create incentives that result in preservation of up to 100,000 acres. So, so that's what it would do is it would just kind of clarify the council's policy objective in this regard.
Questions here? If, if after going through the environmental impact statement and adopting, um, policy in the, uh, long-range plan, the comprehensive plan that said up to 100,000 acres and some private property, some, some private transaction happened to, or multiple private transactions happened over the next 10 years to conserve over 100,000 acres through willing sellers and willing buyers. Is there, the, the comprehensive plan is not going to stop those willing buyers and willing sellers to do conservation transactions, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on amendment number five? Let's go to amendment number six.
So number, number six is, uh, concerns the alignment between the comprehensive plan and the park recreation and open space plan that's adopted by the county. Right? So you have these two separate plans that deal with park and recreation. And, uh, the proposal that came from the executive basically said, let's just align those two so that they're completely in, uh, in sync with each other. At committee, the committee said, well, there's some more things we want to take a look at through the comprehensive plan since that's in front of council today. So we're looking at the comprehensive plan today. Um, and we, and we want to have, uh, the department analyze some additional objectives for subsequent updates to the pros plan, and that's coming in a few years. And so what, what's happening here is council saying, when you do the pros plan update, consider these additional items. Let's have these additional items in our comprehensive plan related to parks. So this amendment would add in it one more thing. And this additional thing would have to do with, um, a policy that provides some sort of alignment between the location where monies are collected for capital projects and where those projects are built. So, so right now what's happening is we have one large kind of service area for, uh, development of Capitol Park projects throughout all of Pierce County. And the monies may be collected, let's, a good example is a lot of money is collected into hallway because that's where a lot of new construction takes place. And then projects maybe are built at Chambers Bay. It's a different location. So what this is saying is let's try to somehow align the locations where the monies are collected with where the money is spent. And so that's kind of the policy objective that we're asking the departments to think about and come up with to insert into the comprehensive plan so that when the pros plan is updated, it reflects that objective. So that's, that's what this would do.
Sounds a lot like a policy they have at Sound Transit called sub-area equity, which is not serving the region very well in my estimation. Councilor Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. And just clarifying, this is referring only to parks or would it also be transportation projects? Cause we have
Just parks.
Okay. So we could do, if, okay.
Councilor Cooper?
Thank, thank you, Chair. The sub-area equity is, is interesting term. I really thought about that, but I, because I, my concern is if it couldn't also be looked at where, as I know, everyone has seen, you know, Superintendent Siegel's presentation where we have 13% of the people and, and 1% or 2%, I think, thinking how it goes of the services. And I don't, and if there's going to be such a limitation on the ability to generate revenue in, in the rural areas, how can the rural areas still get park dollars? And I don't know if there's a way to fit an amendment in that or to have that looked at as well to make sure that the parks we have can be serviced.
This isn't, this is concerning new park capital construction, not, not maintenance. But to your point, Councilwoman, I think what you're saying is, you know, maybe out of my district, there's no growth or, or we're limited to 3% growth, right? Based upon this previous conversation that we just had regarding rural capacity. So how does that equate to new parks in my district, right? New, new spending in my, because if there's no money collected, if there's no REIT, if there's very little park impact fee. And the answer is that there would be less new parks built in your, in your, in your district under that scenario.
Because what we have is pretty well maxed out. So anyway, thank you. Appreciate the thoughts.
Then this amendment would continue to constrain the ability to use funds from that, to, to, to look at the park system as a whole and see where we're under invested either historically or currently and make the investments the council decides needs to be invested in every two years during budget process. Councilor Morale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This there again is a study putting in between bookends, it's not final. It just gives the, uh, planning and opportunity to look at this. My frustration has been the inability for Parks Department to tell me where parking back fees actually come from and how they are given out. And my frustration also goes with the way the Parks Department has divided up the county between north, south, central and the Key Peninsula. Part of this is based on what's happening in the key right now as far as making sure those dollars stay in the area. So I'm not saying this will be final, uh, but there again, I think it needs to be put in there and discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kruger, um, the geographies that are created through, uh, that Parks and Recreation Department uses, um, are those defined in the Parks and Recreation Plan?
Yes.
So council could change those geographies?
Yes. And I would note that at committee, as part of this subject matter, there was a request to take a look at those geographies as part of the comp plan and as part of the spending that occurs. And so that is embedded in the existing preferred alternative proposal. This item that we're talking about today to align the money is kind of an, an expansion of that direction.
Right. And if council wanted to understand, I hear the council members frustration of not being able to follow the money easily. If council wanted to direct the finance department or the Parks Department, the finance department to, um, show a better accounting of where parking back fees are coming from, to see where the funds are generated, just to have awareness of that information. Could, could the council give that, uh, direction?
It would, yes. The council could direct planning and public works and finance to work together to provide some sort of maybe a map or spreadsheet that could indicate the location of the monies that are collected. Um, and also go as far as to show you where the monies are being spent.
Thank you. I, I, I hear the council members' concern and questions. And I, I think there's a different way to, to get the, the information. I don't think putting it in the comp plan is the way to get to the finish line. I think there's a way to get to the council members with very valid requests for information. And perhaps change of where's the central region boundaries? Where's the eastern region boundaries? We, we control that. We can, we can change that. So I, I, I just think there's a different way to more efficiently and directly get to the council members, um, requests. Amendment number seven.
Uh, thank you, Chair. So item number seven, and you, you've all heard about this, council members at, um, study sessions by the folks that have been coming in during community forum. Um, and also at committee asking for, um, and an analysis of potential expansion of 120, 128, uh, Street East, from South Hill down to the Valley floor. So this would be a, a, a new corridor. It's, it's actually a corridor which is, which is in the plans today for analysis, but this would be kind of emphasizing this particular alignment as potentially this connection, um, that would be, uh, that would be, uh, built. So it's an east-west connection from SR 162 up to, up to South Hill. And, and this amendment is saying, uh, let's take a, a look at that.
Questions or comments here? Councilor Hitchen?
Not a question, more of a request. Can we make sure for tomorrow that we have a map that show, I think we already had one produced, but in the packet. So in case there's questions that come up just to see where we're talking, because they provided multiple maps with multiple asks. And so I just want to know what specifically we're talking about.
I'll work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the request. Mr. Kruger, from a financing perspective, to, to even finance and alternatives analysis, it's, it's not cheap. Costs many hundreds of thousands of dollars, sometimes millions of dollars. Those decisions get made during the Transportation Improvement Program deliberations that council does, uh, every year.
That's correct. Yes.
So there'll be a follow-on conversations, but want to make sure council members know, just by putting these magic words in the comp plan, doesn't make it so. These alternatives analysis take a lot of money. And we, we would need to find the resources to appropriate the money to, to make it happen eventually to, to realize the alternatives analysis. So just wanted to make sure council knows the many steps to, that, that are going to come to, to, to make sure we have the information to, to do just this, that this in itself is not going to do it.
What I would say to that Chair is that what this would do is it would direct PPW as part of their environmental work that they're doing today to, um, inform the comprehensive plan, um, update this, this particular alignment.
Right.
So it would, it would, it would have that, some of that work done now throughout this summer in, to inform you in the fall as to whether or not this should be, uh, the option.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I was wide open about the, the steps to get to the finish line.
So
Item eight?
So item eight is the, um, is the, is the policy related to Canyon Road North, northerly extension of Canyon Road. At the committee, there was an amendment that was adopted to indicate that Canyon Road North, northerly extension would be, would be phased. And that the Milroy Bridge crossing would be, would be phase one. And that, um, the other work that was going to take place related to, uh, the connection between Milroy and, um, and Canyon Road kind of out of the valley would be, would be a subsequent phase. It would be studied, it would be analyzed. But that spending would not be within the six-year plan. So that's what happened at committee. What this does is it reinserts in the capital plan, so the Transportation Improvement Plan, funding for the property acquisition for that northerly extension, so the right-of-way. And so, uh, that decision that was made as part of your budget in terms of property acquisition would remain valid. So that's really what's happening here is an alignment between a previous council decision related to right-of-way acquisition that's been funded in the budget would remain in the six, the six-year CFP, but kind of this concept of actually building the road in 2027, which frankly, I don't believe was super realistic anyway, um, would not be within the six-year plan. That would be after, you know, year 2030. So that's what this amendment would do.
Thank you. Questions or comments about amendment eight? Councilor Morale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate council members Campbell's work on this, but what this does is it just, uh, shows that we're continually working on the corridor and not just walking away from it. And as Mr. Kruger said, the 2024 through 2025 budget, there is, I think, $1.5 million worth of right-of-way in that budget that we just continue to use the allocations that we've already approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Kruger, for briefing on the amendments. Those, and sounds like more, will be up for consideration tomorrow. Anything else, Mr. Kruger?
No, I would just say that, you know, it sounds like there will be some additional amendments. I'll be working with Councilwoman Kruger to prepare those, and I hope to have those by study session tomorrow at noon. But that's all I can offer at this point. I don't fully understand all of those amendment ideas quite yet. So.
Mr., thank you. Mr. Kruger, I want to come back to rural density bonuses. I know you thought you were off the hook, but, um, again, I think there's lots of confusion here in this one, because time is short. Is there any language you could, um, foresee, maybe you're not prepared to answer this now, but is there any language you could foresee to make it abundantly clear to any reader, any council member, any reader of the public that we are studying options for the preferred alternative related to rural density bonuses? And everything between zero to 100, from doing nothing related to rural density bonuses to removing them in every community plan area, but anywhere in between, just some community plan areas are all to be studied and analyzed during the preferred alternative. Can you, can you foresee any language that would make that, um, even more clear than it is today? I know we've, we've asked you this seven different ways and you've said it on the record, but is there any other, uh, language we could do to make it super crystal clear?
I mean, what's difficult here is that the everything you're doing is to consider options to potentially modify the county's comprehensive plan. You're, you're, the council is not making a final decision when it comes to this, this is a resolution, right? It's, 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 it's a kind of a non-binding resolution signaling policy intent. And you're asking through various, you know, and, and many things here where we haven't been talking about. If you, if you read through the R 2024 158, there's, there's a lot in there, right? That has not been discussed at, at the committee or, or, or today. Where you're asking the department to prepare final documents for your consideration? That's, that's what it is. It's, 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 you're, you're asking for consideration of options. And so, um, I'm not sure how else to structure language that says, please consider options any stronger than
Please consider options.
Yeah. I mean, the na, the nature of the format, I guess, creates a little confusion. The proposal that came to council was a resolution with a couple of tables. And the tables speak to various items that, um, for whatever reason, the department and the executive felt should be highlighted. And so that's what's before you. And I would also say that this is an optionable resolution. There, there is nothing in statute or GMA that obligates the council to adopt a resolution signaling its policy intent when it comes to preparing the final EIS. It's certainly helpful to the department. I mean, you're, you're giving your, um, planning and public works department, uh, assistance when it comes to what they need to do over the next several months. It's really very important at this stage of the game because we, you know, we're, we're, we're struggling with retaining staff in planning the public works. And so by the legislative branch of the county government signaling to those staff people, what it is that you want them to work on is helpful. But it's not mandatory.
And with or without amendment three in front of us, uh, council could, could land that as an option with the current written preferred alternative, council could, uh, prohibit rural density bonuses, uh, on the Key Penn and, and Good Harbor Peninsula and nowhere else. That, that, that is one of many options in front of council, uh, with the preferred, with the underlying preferred alternative.
That, that's, that's, the, the real, the only real obligation that you have when it comes to rural densities is to make sure that you're not providing densities that are greater than one unit per five acres. So that's a, that's kind of a bright line that's been established through the courts. So densities cannot be higher than that. And, um, through the environmental analysis associated with this work, you cannot increase density in the rural areas or you will be inconsistent with your targets. So those are the two things that I would say are just really kind of hard stops. Don't, don't go there or else you're going to really open yourself up to a challenge. And as you know, Mr. Chair, when we receive challenges to our comprehensive plan, it takes a lot of discretion away from council. Because now all of a sudden you're dealing with, with a challenge on a specific item. And councils, council loses its flexibility oftentimes, and then we're forced to do things that are difficult. And we, and Pierce County has been faced with that a lot of times through my career.
And we've lost
We've, we've lost, we've lost a lot of hearing board cases, correct? So, um,
Yeah. Councilor Cooper?
Thank, thank you, Chair. I'm curious, what is the penalty? So if, if there's 150 units in the rural area and over the 10-year period or in a year's period, we are 25 over that or 50 over that. Does the PSRC have any or in a years period, we are 25 over that or 50 over that, does the PSRC have any repercussions?
No.
So it's just a matter of dealing with a potential lawsuit with the growth management hearings board?
It's, you know, my fear would be to have, you know, so my, you know, council staff supports the council's decision, right? Whatever the council says, it should be the decision. So council right now has said we have, you know, three or four rural designations. My concern would be to have a hearings board come back and say your densities are too high in the rural area, so you have to eliminate a lot of your rural densities and shrink those densities down to to numbers that create properties that are undivisible throughout your rural area. So that would be a concern based upon council's legislative policy intent that I've seen through the years that say we generally want to maintain one unit per 10 acres as a higher, as our highest rural density. And it's because of the vacant lots, right? So it's the vacant lots, it's the numbers that the county has that show the number of permits that are issued annually. And then when you do the math, it says, well, guess what? We're building more based upon our existing vacant lot inventory than we need to meet our target that's been adopted by the council. And therefore, we shouldn't allow any subdivision in the rural areas at all. So that would be a concern I would have if there was a challenge along those lines to the county, right?
If there's a point in time where influx of residents exceed normal or more come than what was projected, how are those numbers adjusted? Does PSRC come back and say, oh, counties, we've got, you know, a million more people coming to the state than we anticipated. Therefore, you can alter your management policies.
So the trend line is to focus the growth in urban areas, and I would suspect that would be the solution that we would be forced to take would be to continue to upzone and invest in infrastructure in the urban areas, but maintain that UGA boundary and 3% growth rate target outside of it would be my suspicion.
And in the event of property owners who are who prefer to challenge at a loss of property rights, would that be on the growth management hearings board that that would start with?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no other questions now, Mr. Krueger. Thank you. We are at. Councilor Kruever?
Thank you, Chair. I could kind of highlight the intention of the amendments if you want, or I can. I just have a couple for the council amendment number seven on the short term rentals to ask that there be an analysis or establish policy based on the average monthly usage of water capacity for those that are on the onsite septic, meaning that if it's a four bedroom, four people anticipated, that's 120 people a month. And if it's a short term rental, it's just a weekend that it averages out in that kind of usage. And then also looking to establish a policy or a pilot program for outreach on informing them of the affidavit that folks have that they can be, you know, the good neighbor kind of thing, very. You'll have copies of this. Then on the land use for the elimination of the R five designation, asking that that also go into the Good Harbor Pen Key Penn plan areas. On the TDR program, asking that there be an analysis of the financial impact to the county, because if you're taking an asset and giving it to another county, you know, what will, what's the long term effect on that? And supporting farmers, it's just adding a few words for the ag tourism that we also support farmers who are associated with the risk. For the environment and climate section, the conservation, you folks were received an email from Heath Hikida. And that explains what will be coming on that. Then for the transportation, for the water utility, asking that they identify in the policy the elements that will be included with that water utility. Because I understand right now it's basically being formulated because of the receivership of the water systems and to do a full blown water utility built out in 10 years, it'll be involving more than just that. And I think we should know that ahead of time. And then it just to think for the support policies to provide sewer, just to remove the individual septic systems can be a source of pollution and create environmental health problems. It's just a little bit too much information. I don't think it's necessary to be in there. It's pros and cons, so it's just less dialogue. That's it.
Thank you for the preview. It's helpful. Okay, we are at, we're still on the agenda for tomorrow. The US Department Homeland Security Violence and Terrorism Prevention Grant Program grant request. Mr. Chapman, to brief.
Yes, thank you, Chair Mello. Rebecca Chapman, council staff. You have before you a grant application from the Department of Emergency Management. This is a $700,000 request to the Department of Homeland Security for their fiscal year 2024 Targeted Violence and Terrorism Prevention Grant Program. This grant would support state, local, and tribal efforts in preventing targeted violence and terrorism through collaboration with partners. Partners are identified, partners identified for this program would be hospitals, schools, law enforcement, and first responders. The department would utilize these funds to perform a vulnerability assessment and to develop a plan and for training and exercises among the partners to practice emergency response. This grant would provide one limited duration FTE for 24 months to support the program. This FTE would be housed in the Department of Emergency Management. The program would run from October 2024 through the end of September 2026. So it would go over to the next biennial budget. No match is required. This grant has a deadline of May 17th. And it is a competitive federal grant, and we do have John Holdsworth from Emergency Management available for questions.
Thank you, John. Do you have anything to add on behalf of the department?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Mello. As was mentioned, you know, the program really is focused on leveraging our Regional Coordination Council work plan and work that we've done to develop a plan for targeted violence, to expand and formalize a regional threat assessment and management team, and then continue and expand some of the training seminars and work that we have done around violence and reunification. So I appreciate the opportunity to have this put forward.
Thank you. Questions by council? Councilor Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. Two questions. First is, have we received a grant like this in the past? Have we done this before?
No, we have, no, we have not. This is a relatively new grant program over the last couple of fiscal years. And this is our first time putting in for it.
Okay, and then my second question is, we are the home of the largest military base west of the Mississippi. I was wondering if JBLM would be involved with part of strategic support, but I didn't see anything in the details that we got saying them.
Yeah, so JBLM is a participant in our regional coordinating council as well as many of our other preparedness efforts, and so we'd absolutely be inviting them to participate in this program with us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Kruever.
Thank you, Chair. Is this geared for foreign or domestic?
This is really targeted towards domestic violence extremism.
Do you have a what's it called, a chart of definitions? What is a domestic terrorist?
Yeah, so we use the FBI's definition for domestic terrorism, which really focuses on people that are here in the United States that are contributing acts of terrorism. So some of the recent and probably most high profile incidents we've seen were the the attacks on critical infrastructure in Christmas Day of 2022 when the TPU substations were targeted. We also had the white powder incident at the election center last November during the election, and so it is targeted on those domestic terrorists attacks and threats.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, the request is that this be placed on the consent agenda at tomorrow's meeting for authorization by council for the department to proceed, so there's no objection. That is what we will do. This will appear on tomorrow's consent agenda for authorization. Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Thank you, Mr. Holdsworth. Appreciate the department pursuing outside grant opportunities. We're at item number three, review of committee agendas for the week. Ms. Long?
All right, thank you. So at 1:30 this afternoon, you have a public safety committee meeting. There is one discussion item on that agenda. It's the crime rate trends, and that will be with Patty Jackson from the sheriff's department. Tomorrow, May 14th, beginning at 9:30, you have an economic and structured development committee meeting. There's one proposal and, excuse me, two proposals and one discussion item. First proposal is O 2024 519. This is granting a non-exclusive franchise to the city of Ordin for the location of sewer lines. That has a May 21st final hearing date. The other is O 2024 520. This is granting a non-exclusive franchise to the city of Ordin for the location of water lines. That also has a May 21st final hearing date. And then you have the fish passage barrier removal update. And that will be with planning and public works staff. At noon is your regular Tuesday study session, just the usual agenda items there. At 3:00 PM is your council meeting. Also this week, on Wednesday, the 15th, beginning at 9:30 is a flood control zone district executive committee meeting, and those are the meetings for the remainder of this week.
Thank you. Are there questions about our meeting schedule for the remainder of the week? Thank you, Ms. Long. Item number four, discussion of administrative items. Ms. Long, do you have anything in the absence of the chief of staff and deputy chief of staff?
I don't today. Thank you.
Thank you. Both are traveling. Item number five, other business. Last week, we began the discussion about the Roy City Council appointment process. This does not happen very often around here. So we asked Ms. Long to to do some further thinking about timeline and major milestones for this. She's worked with other staff and is prepared to brief council on the critical next step. So Ms. Long, turn it back to you.
Great, thank you. So we went over the process last time, and now we're going to look at the timeline. So this is proposed timeline. So tomorrow, assuming everything looks good, there would be a news release or an announcement of the vacancy sent to local and official newspapers for publication. I've also attached, in addition to this like brief timeline you'll see in your packets, a proposed news release that has more detailed information, and then also a copy of the application for the vacant council position. Because one of the publications is the Niskali Valley News, they only publish once a week, so you have to get it there in advance to them. So it stretches the timeline out a little bit. So the anticipated actual publication date would be May 17th, this Friday. And the publication would go in the Niskali Valley News, that is a requirement of code since it's the local paper. In the News Tribune, that's also a requirement of code since it's the official county newspaper. And the council webpage, that's a requirement. We'd also post it on the council's Facebook page. And we'll be contacting the city of Roy. I posted on their reader board in town. So that should get to everybody who potentially would be interested in applying. On May 20th, you'll see, and this was approved by rules, the appointment of or to be scheduled, the appointment of the ad hoc committee, if you recall, that is a code requirement, ad hoc committee to review the applications and then submit the top five to the council for interviews and actual appointment. Friday, the 31st of May would be the deadline for submitting the applications. And you'll see in the press release and in the application that we've noted that by May 31st, by 5:00 PM via email to me is the deadline. So I'll receive all the applications and then transfer those to the appointed members of the ad hoc committee for review. By Tuesday, June 4th, the ad hoc committee will transmit the finalists to the council. That'll be right, and then Tuesday, June 11th, there would be a resolution appointing introduced on your consent agenda. That would probably just be a resolution appointing with a blank in it. And then Tuesday, June 18th, would be the final action on the appointment resolution by the council. Our code does acknowledge that the interviews may occur in executive session, so by that time, it would be your choice whether you'd want to do that in a study session or in the actual council meeting. And then the appointment, of course, would be in a meeting open to the public. So that's the look at the timeline. If you want more details, you'll see those in both the press release and then also some details in the introduction to the application.
Thank you. And certainly, especially if Councilmember Kruever, who knows the area very well, if she has other ideas about how to get the word out, I'm sure she will share them with our communications staff to have further ideas, but this is a really good, really good list to get the word out to folks who are following and interested. Councilor Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify that, so the application that we see here, they're emailing it to you, so are they requesting it from, is there an online form is actually what I'm asking? As opposed to sending you a email?
I'm going to ask Brian on that one how he plans to set that up. He is online, but yeah, that's a good question, how that.
Because it's easy to email a link for somebody to go in and fill out a form that then sent to you, but if they're if they're just emailing you from their direct email, there's our spam filter catches those all the time.
Mr. Dominique, did you hear the question?
Yes, Chair, I did. So we're going to be posting the application online. We're going to try to make it fillable, and then when they submit it, it will just go straight to Susan. But I'm still working through that with with our web people, so. I hope that answers the question.
It's the goal is to get it there. Okay, just wanted to check. We, I mean, we have a system through our, through the execs if they're applying for boards and commissions, I would assume there could be a same. Like, we know it's possible, so I would just hope. I think it's easier to do it that way because if it's just email you randomly, they're going to come in with different headers or easy to lose someone in through the cracks, and I would hate somebody to apply and not get presented to us just because it's not consistent, so thank you.
Thank you for the clarification there. Thank you for hearing that, Mr. Dominique. Just wanted to, thank you for putting this together and the work since last week to move this along. Counsel, my recommendation for the ad hoc committee would be council member Denson, Kruever, and Morell would be, would be the three member.
You all get tickets to the Roy rodeo.
Again, their, their, their role would be to meet between the deadline of Friday, May 31 and Tuesday, June 4. They would meet and sift through the many, many, many applications we're anticipating to receive for this responsibility and forward their top five based on their judgment to the rest of the council, and the rest of the council will take it from there. So that's the role of the ad hoc committee. And so rules is set to appoint the ad hoc committee on Monday, May 20. The motion I anticipate putting on that agenda would be for the ad hoc committee members to be councilmembers Denson, Kruever, and Morell. If that needs to change, please let me know before the rules committee on May 20. Secondly, in order to facilitate the conclusion of this decision-making process by council on Tuesday, June 18th, my recommendation is going to be that we interview candidates during study session. Likely go into an executive session after that, and then, as always, we'll have to make a decision in an open public meeting at the 3:00 PM regular meeting later that day. So scheduling around study session would be my, my recommendation from a scheduling and organizing perspective. Questions or comments about those process steps? Councilman Morel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As far as the ad hoc committee meeting and going through everything, we can do that here, but the actual interviews, do they have to be here? Could they be in Roy?
They could be. They just have to be in a meeting open to the public.
They just what?
Have to be in a meeting open to the public. That would be the requirement.
And then when we bring them, are they expected to come all the way down here for the final?
They could be on Zoom.
They can be on Zoom.
Do they have internet? Kidding.
I don't know.
Elementary school does.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the timeline and process steps? Well, thank you again, Ms. Long and Mr. Dominique. I know you were not expecting to have to work on this, but thank you for, thank you for advancing the next steps on our behalf. Is there any other business by council members? Councilmember Herrera?
Thank you, Chair. Just real quick, I just wanted to mention a little-known holiday that is today, May 13th, 2024. It's called Children of Fallen Patriots Day. And I just wanted to highlight that real quick, because in the last 25 years, there've been over 15,000 children who lost a parent due to a military conflict. And I just wanted to highlight the resilience of these Americans and to understand, remember, and honor their resilience for America. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Thank you for making sure we paused and did that. Any other business by other members? Ms. Long, any other business for council?
Not today, thank you.
We'll see no other business before the Pierce County Council and Monday study session. We are adjourned.